Nicole, would you read the mission statement, please?
To improve the quality of life in the city of Rocky Ford, making it a great place to live and work, while strengthening relationships and creating pride in the community.
Thank you, Nicole.
I know from past years what the budget is for the city. And I also know, and am privy to know, from past years, what the budget of the chamber was.
You have no idea what you're talking about.
Nicole, please.
I bought the property. I paid quite a lot of money for the property.
Then maybe you should take better care of it.
I have left. Oh. Mr. Mayor, will you please control her? Maybe you should take control, maybe you should take better control of the building across the street. It needs to be torn down.
What building across the street?
Seven oh one Sycamore, the city owns.
It's actually in process of being torn down, so...
I'm not here to argue. I'm here to make a comment.
Let's, let's listen to his comment and follow up with any questions if you have.
My question is, I'm gonna tell you this.
Sorry, but that's the way it goes.
I'm gonna tell you this. I'm gonna tell everybody on the city council. Are you, are you following me, Mrs. Mullinsky? If you're gonna put me on trial here when I bring up something to you, I will file a lawsuit against every one of you because I am a citizen. I have rights.
So are we.
Whatever happened with my property on Road 18 is none of your business, number one. It's a done deal. Number two is Miss Roberts and everything else, Mr. Guruley, everybody else. If I own a property, yes, I own a property, but I keep my property maintained. My commercial building. My commercial buildings are maintained.
That is absolutely the biggest crock of crap I have heard all night.
Hey, hey, hold, hold, hold. First of all.
Nicole, would you read the mission statement, please?
To improve the quality of life in the city of Rocky Ford, making it a great place to live and work, while strengthening relationships and creating pride in the community.
Thank you, Nicole. All right, we'll move on to our first public comment. If anyone would like to address council on any items not on the agenda, come up to the front now.
Can I, uh, my name's Tom Martin. Can I defer my public comment till you get to the part where you're signing or considering the property of the school?
Yeah, so, yep, so at that time, we'll bring you up for your testimony.
I'm Susan Jung, former mayor of Rocky Ford. And I'm here tonight to talk about the movement of the sculpture at the Gobin Parkway, or whatever you want to call it. And first of all, Ron and Nancy Asherman were kind enough to come to my council and offer to spend a large amount of money to put that sculpture up. And the way he's been treated over this is very disrespectful for somebody in this community that spends hours at community service and spent the money for that sculpture. Second of all, it's disrespectful for this council to even consider moving something that a former council has already approved.
It didn't get put where it was approved to be put.
Nicole, Nicole, it's, we'll, we'll listen right now.
And I also know that after it was put up, there was an event in that sculpt, in that place where the sculpture is. And there was at least a hundred, if not a hundred and twenty-five people there. We had a stage, we had a band, we had tables, and we had, everybody had a wonderful time. And we worked around the sculpture, but the sculpture was also an item that people looked at and remarked and said how nice it was that it was in the park. And I think after hearing what the cost is going to be to move it.
How does she know what the cost is when we don't even know what the cost is?
Nicole, she doesn't, she doesn't, so let's just listen to her right now.
The amount that it's gonna cost to remove, remove, move it and hopefully not disturb any of the rocks that are in it. I know from, from past years what the budget is for the city. And I also know, and am privy to know, from past years, what the budget of the chamber was.
You have no idea what you're talking about.
Nicole, please.
That there's not the money in the budget from either organization to spend that kind of money to move the sculpture. And I think it needs to be stayed right where it is at.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else for a public comment?
You do.
All right, we'll move on to the consent agenda. Consent agenda includes approval of previous minutes for September 10th, special meeting minutes for September 19th, and meeting minutes for September 24th. Also includes an application for renewal of medical marijuana license for Rocky Farms LLC. If anyone would like to discuss those separately, let me know. We can move those to the agenda. If not, entertain a motion to approve consent agenda.
I'll make a motion that we, go ahead.
Motion to approve consent agenda eight dot one, approval of minutes, approval of previous minutes, meeting minutes for September 10th, 2024, special meeting minutes for September 19th, 2024, and the minutes, the meeting minutes for September 24th, 2024. Also eight dot, eight dot two, the application for renewal of medical marijuana license for Rocky Farms LLC. Also Rocky Farms at seventeen oh nine Swink Avenue, Rocky Ford.
I'll second that.
Okay, call for a vote.
Baron.
Yes.
Martinez.
Yes.
Roberts.
Yes.
Mullins.
Yes.
Herrera.
Yes.
Mayor Guruley.
Yes.
We have no changes to the agenda, um, so if we can get a motion to approve agenda as is.
I'm, I motion that we approve the agenda.
I'll say.
Okay, call for a vote.
Martinez.
Yes.
Roberts.
Yes.
Mullins.
Yes.
Herrera.
Yes.
Baron.
Yes.
Mayor Guruley.
Yes.
Nothing on presentations. We'll move on to city manager report. Stacy?
Um, so I don't have any updates for five oh one North Main, four hundred South Main, or eleven forty-nine Railroad on that fire sidewalk project update. We have four applications turned in to date. Rick is still fielding a lot of phone calls, questions on who's gonna be the contractor and why can't the homeowner do their homework? Asphalt project, it started yesterday up at the high school. Chief of Police update, still, we've had three applicants. One, one doesn't have the qualifications. I'd like to, to do interviews next week. Get a request of one of the applicants. USDA sewer line project, have been in contact with Element Engineer. He has requests. They've requested a meeting with CDPHE to revise the implementation schedule. That will be included in the last quarter for the compliance on consent. When the interim financing is secured, they will make that presentation to, to CDPHE. But I will get with them also to come up with a presentation for the town hall. Street sign audit, Rick actually met with Colorado Barricade at the Snow and Ice Conference two weeks ago, and they are coming here on Thursday to, to give us an audit. Babcock Park, someone went, ran through the fence on the West Field. Pretty much destroyed the whole thing. They also hit the handicap ramp, splitting one of the rails and pushing the railing in. Claim will be filed with SIRS, and there was a police report filed. Swimming pool, Public Works removed the grassy areas to the north and south of the deep end. At the request of Cindy Abert, some wrinkleheads will be capped, and then the pool commission will go in and put concrete in those areas. We were for it because it'd be less maintenance for the city and, and the pool. And then we're not getting debris in the pool and going through the filter. And then the last thing I had was, cloud permit, all the information ordinance and permits and forms have been submitted. And so, once they get those put into the software, then they'll be contacting us for training.
Were they gonna remove the grass on the other side by the splash pad as well?
Um, that's.
Turf.
It's AstroTurf. It's just was.
Grass growing through it.
So, grass came up through it, so that, that might be a project for, for next year.
Okay.
Any questions on the manager report? The museum curator report was written, so that's there for review. We'll move down to new business. Move on to new business. Item number one, and that's a request to close Public Street for the Arkansas Valley Balloon Festival Saturday, November 2nd. And that would be closing Main Street from Washington Avenue to Front Street and Front Street north of City Hall and parking lot for parade on that day. And that one, uh, I don't think there's any changes to the way that they have done that in the past, so it would look like it did previous years.
You don't, just make a motion, right?
I make a motion that we approve the Arkansas Valley Balloon Festival request to close Public Street on Saturday, November 2nd, 2024.
I second.
Okay, call for a vote. Rebecca?
Roberts.
Yes.
Mullins.
Yes.
Herrera.
Yes.
Baron.
Yes.
Martinez.
Yes.
Mayor Guruley.
Yes.
Okay, that request is approved. So we will move on to, just briefly, item number two under new business, lease agreement between city of Rocky Ford and the Rocky Ford Country Club. So if, if everyone's had a chance to review that, we have kind of our, uh, our version. That was submitted over to the Rocky Ford Country Club. They're gonna be having a special meeting sometime this week or next. Rebecca, do you remember exactly when that was?
She didn't tell me exactly when, but she said they would be having one prior to when they normally meet.
So they, they do have a copy of our version. And if there are gonna be changes, then they'll present those. If they're good with our version, then they'll let us know. And we'd be able to approve that at our next meeting.
And the biggest change that I saw fifty went from thirty, they were asking for thirty, it went to twenty, right? Yours?
We proposed twenty.
Have there been changes to the, other than the way that we can turn, before we could terminate, at least for any reason, either party? Aside from that, has there been any changes to who's responsible for what kinds of bills?
The only, the, the change on there was specifying the gas and electric. Instead of just, it said before all utilities, which they don't pay a city utility bill. So we just specified that it would be all electric and gas utility.
Well, I think we also changed where they're gonna split the water. Like the water, fifty fifty now, wasn't that all city water?
On, on the pump, and I think that one is kind of, that was broken out into a separate clause. Yeah. That, that one didn't change. That stood the same.
So we just gotta wait for that to deal with that.
So do we need to make a motion that we're happy with what this says? Or can, and if they come back and don't have anything else, then it's already approved and they can sign and move on?
Yeah, we can.
Or do we wait until they come back?
Yeah, it's just kind of a for review now. If, if anyone wanted to make any additional changes. We, we did have this on the last meeting's agenda and, uh, it sounds like it kind of worked out because the country club still could use more time to review, so. Really, so yes, this one is good and, uh, we'll hear back from that side. I don't know, Larry, do you have any additional insight?
Nope, they're just waiting for it so they can start working on all our projects.
So if we approved it right now and they came back with no changes, you could sign it and we could just not worry about it? If we're okay with what it says?
Is everyone okay with what it says?
Is everyone okay with, do we want to revisit this again, or are we good if it's? Okay, then I'm gonna make a motion that we approve the lease agreement between the Rocky Ford, city of Rocky Ford and the Rocky Ford Country Club with a twenty-year lease agreement.
As presented.
As presented.
I'll second that.
I forgot this is second, I'm sorry. Tom, was that you?
No, it was me.
No, the second?
Oh, that was Larry.
Thank you, Larry.
Call for a vote.
Roberts.
Yes.
Mullins.
Yes.
Herrera.
Yes.
Baron.
Yes.
Martinez.
Yes.
Mayor Guruley.
Yes.
See, what that does is it keeps us having a golf course for at least twenty years.
But that also means we don't have to revisit this unless there's a change.
It's a good start because, yeah, you know, there are a lot of people that go up there.
Right, our next item, number three, will be discussion of the proposed sale of city property at Athan Pine. We have a parcel number on that. Lengthier parcel number, but it is the property at Athan Pine. So I don't know if we want to, would, would it be helpful to hear a little bit more from Jack? Or it's same, same project that he came and presented at the last?
I guess I'd like to hear what his proposal is. I mean, I think we got a little bit of information, but, I mean, we know what you, I guess we know what you're planning to do with it. So, from the last meeting, we, we were all here when he told us what he was gonna do with it, right?
Yeah. Yeah, so if you'd like to come up and just kind of talk about that specifically to that parcel.
Uh, my name's Jack Barker. I own Innovative Water Technologies and Ark Valley Land Development. The property that we're proposing to buy is basically the property that used to be the school's property there. And it surrounds the property. I made an offer to the school board to buy the school, to renovate it for an international training center. And actually, it's on a, like, I think a point-six acre lot, just cut out of the whole property that used to be the school property. And what I would like to do is buy the property. We would manicure it, we would secure it, would put it under camera surveillance all the time. One of the things we want to do is it's got a big concrete pad out there. We want to build a gazebo out there on the pad. So we have a barbecue area, things like that, for the students that we bring in from out of the country to be able to go outside and recreate. We can have barbecues, things like that. Also, just to, security reasons and stuff for the property. Right now, we'd basically be advertising it as a international training center on a point-six acre lot. But we would rather advertise it as an international training center on a four-acre campus. We've got a lot of plans into it. We're already three hundred thousand dollars into this project right now. We're closing on the land on the thirtieth, I mean, on the building on the thirtieth this month. I made the offer to the city for twenty-five thousand dollars for that property. I could have you a cashier's check by the end of the month. And we can just keep the ball rolling for what we want to do. We have talked to several of the property owners around it. Even an hour ago, we stopped and talked to a lady and asked her how often she sees people using that field. And she said, only at night when they're not supposed to be there. And they go out and pick up the beer cans and the trash and stuff like that, the, the neighbors do. And, um, and she said, oh, other than that, there are some motorbikes that use it a lot, which aren't supposed to be on it. I'm not saying it doesn't get used, but I haven't seen it get used. And they said they haven't seen it get used for quite some time now. But for us to have, uh, part of what we're gonna do, we're gonna have three transit vans and, um, we're gonna pick up the students from the airport, bring them to Rocky Ford, and the whole time they're here, we're gonna be taking them to different events, to our shop for training, to lunch, to dinner, to do different things. I'm hoping maybe we can do a theater night with them, things like that, um, just to try to keep everything happening right here in Rocky Ford. So, uh, that's the whole idea with it, and we'd just like to keep moving forward.
Thank you. Any questions?
I, myself, went around the neighborhood yesterday, walking on doors. Neighbor across the street says mostly in the summertime, she'll see maybe weekends, four or five kids out there on bikes. Another neighbor said, he never really looks back there, but he hears people back there. He thought maybe it was RC cars or something doing their thing. It could have been the motorbikes or whatever, but he says kids, very infrequent. Another neighbor said, uh, same thing, not that many kids, four or five kids, they just see, you know, on a week, maybe a weekend or something. So, yeah, there's not a whole lot of usage. My concern as a citizen is there's not that many parks in Rocky Ford. This is the only park that has anything BMX biking, or even if it's RC cars, whatever for them. And if we take that away from what else is there for them to do? Because there's not much to do here to start with. If we were to sell it and, and do that, maybe we can apply some of this ones towards fixing another park, something similar to it.
Well, I, I'll say that I live a block and a half from there. And every time my kids go to there, go to that bike park with their bikes, they come home with a flat tire. So I think if we're gonna keep it, we need to maintain it better.
I did speak to a, a city employee, says that just maintaining it, cutting grass, everything, they, two men, roughly six hours to do it right. So, as far as maintenance, two, two adult males, six hours on a day, just.
Just to mow it.
Mow it, yeah.
And there used to be a play structure out there, too, that was.
We had to remove it.
Because it was full of, it was wood.
Yeah.
But I played on it as a kid.
You see this educational facility as being something that is gonna be moved, that you're gonna be using this for in excess of a decade?
Yes.
Decades.
I think, I'm not gonna stand.
I want it to be generational, yeah, not just.
I have no problem with this. I'd have done it for dollars, to be honest with you.
Movie night because our grand needs more, more visitors. He can get something with the grand. Or you can get something there, you can, maybe. International movie night or something, I don't know, they can always.
Can you get me a accessory page from him? Does he have a necessary page?
And then, you know, it's roughly, I didn't know the research myself, it's roughly, the average acre size in the community like Rocky Ford, roughly a little over half an acre. You got three acres here, so it's roughly six lots we'll be losing. We're selling just under six lots. I think it was twenty-five thousand two hundred sixty square feet per, per lot, I think is what I was researching on, so.
And if it was gonna be developed, the sewer is in the alley on the west side, and the water is on Eighth Street on the east side, and there would be no way ever, you'd have to cross other properties to get to it from the Eighth Street. So really, the only frontage for it is pine, where there's no water, no sewer there.
I'm really excited about this project. I just have a question for the council. Does anybody really have any objections to this? Because if not, I'd like to make a motion that we.
We, we, we will, we will, well, we have someone else to hear.
Oh, there's, well, I didn't realize we're taking a public comment.
Yeah.
Okay.
As long as it's on the agenda.
Okay, any other questions for Jack?
Thank you.
JR?
Just an observation. As it's set up, it's a dirt bike track now, it's actually set up by Lex Gil. And he did cover it now.
Yeah.
Asked permission to do it, but the issue was never raised about liability. And if a kid is hurt on that, guess who's stuck with it, because it is right now in the city.
Thank you.
So when Lex did that, Stacy, I know he worked with you, was there an agreement on who was supposed, no, he didn't work with you. Who did he work with on that? Okay, was there any sort of agreement on who was supposed to care for it after?
He was going to do the track and then, but basically parks mows the weedy part in the alley.
So just not a very?
There's just no grass, so it's, most of it's weeds.
You, oh, yeah, it's goat heads.
Oh, gosh.
Oh, yeah. Okay, so.
Mr. Martin, if you could come on up?
Yeah, my name's Tom Martin. I'm actually a property owner. I have the largest property line on that street, that lot. Um, I just let you know, nobody knocked on my door. I have the largest. I have the largest fence line. Here, here's a problem I have. The property's owned by the city. To me, it should have been put up for bid. I mean, it's owned by the taxpayers. I should get the opportunity to buy it, just as well as this gentleman has to. And I'd like to buy the whole thing. I really would. And I would work for Mr. Barker if he wants to split it in half. I don't need the whole thing. My plan was is to make it into a, like a co-op, a city garden. I mean, there's lots of places for people to come to, and, and, and there's a lot of people around here that, that don't have space to grow a garden. They don't know anything about a garden. There's seniors, we have senior centers, everything else. I think it'd be beneficial to the city of Rocky Ford to use part of that space as a garden to let people come enjoy something. If we keep selling off every piece of parcel we have in the city of Rocky Ford, what are we gonna have left? We sold, we sold the, um, uh, industrial park out there, I believe, to this gentleman. Now, now we don't have anywhere to build. That was set up as industrial park. We sell this off. The other problem I have is he mentions cameras. Uh, I really don't want cameras peering into my bedroom windows. I'm sure all the neighbors wouldn't either. I have a city, I, I paid Black Hills Energy seventeen hundred dollars to put a street light up behind my house that illuminates the whole area. I don't see kids out there at night. I don't see trash. I don't see anybody pick up trash. I know it's mowed on a weekly basis. It doesn't take six hours because I, I get up in the morning, I can hear his lawnmower. He's usually gone in like an hour and a half. They have a big riding lawnmower. I mean, I'd be willing to, if he wants to split it and sell it, I mean, he, I, I don't want the parcel that he wants. I want the parcel behind my house on seven hundred Sycamore Street back to his parking lot. He wants someone with a concrete pad. Maybe we could work out a deal with the city and we could split it. It'd be a benefit for him and a benefit for me. Where he's at, if he stays over by the pad, there's really no people, if he wants to put cameras up around the building, that's fine. But behind my house, there's like seven neighbors on Eighth Street, my house, Mr. Nelson next door, and then you have the whole Sixth Street. I mean, I don't know about you, but would you like to have something lit up at night with cameras everywhere?
I love cameras. I think they're fantastic.
I have eight out of my house.
Well, I'm, I'm, I'm happy for you, but I, I bought the property. I paid quite a lot of money for the property.
Then maybe you should take better care of it.
I have left. Oh. Mr. Mayor, will you please control her? Maybe you should take control, maybe you should take better control of the, of building across the street. It needs to be torn down.
What building across the street?
Seven, seven oh one Sycamore, the city owns.
It's actually in process of being torn down, so.
I'm not here to argue. I'm here to make a comment.
Let's, let's listen to his comment and follow up with any questions if you have.
My question is, is I will take his offer and make it worth more to you, to buy the whole thing. I'm to that point. I have cash. I will write you a check right now for it. And I will beat Mr. Barker's bid. I think it should be left up to the, to, uh, people, like, if a neighbor wants to buy it, fine. If I wanna buy it, he wants to buy it, but it should left up to the public. It's publicly owned and it should be put up for bid.
I won't disagree with that. I mean, I'm, I'm okay with it.
I have a, I have a question. You know, one of the big things that, that I would consider in this is the, the benefit to the public and the overall public good in this.
I would put a community garden in. I think that'd be very good. Don't you think, Mr. Martinez? That'd be very good for the public.
I think we've been looking for places. I mean, how long?
There's one on.
But why do we need to sell it to him to make a community garden there?
Why do we need to sell it to him?
Maybe we split it and keep part of it and we make a community garden.
That's an option.
Just to kind of help with, with understanding that, um, you, you said you own other properties?
I own quite a few other properties, but I can't put a community garden where I live, where I own.
And you own commercial properties?
I do.
How many commercial properties do you own that are vacant?
Why does that bring up, uh, why are we discussing my vacant property?
It's, it, it helps me understand.
I have a vacant property because the city refuses. Well, I, okay, I own a building on Main Street.
And economic development.
Okay, I'm gonna tell you, first of all, I don't think it's in your business that I own. Secondly, if you wanna know, I own a commercial building on Main Street that's next to a burn-up building that I've been fighting the city for to be demolished for eighteen years.
So that was one you own?
Yeah.
That's the only one that you own? That's the only commercial property you own?
Does it make a difference?
It does, to us.
I'm just looking at how.
We wanna see what properties you own, and we wanna see what condition they're in, whether or not we would like to sell you another piece of property.
What does that have to do with?
It's our decision. It, it, what it has to do with me and the factor that I'm looking at is.
I own a commercial property. I have no parking on.
The benefit to.
It's up for sale. Would you like to buy it? I will sell it to the city of Rocky Ford.
And as well as economic development in the community, which is something that we, um, are prioritizing. So, commercial businesses are very hard to come by, jobs are very hard to come by.
Would you like to buy them, sir?
Are they listed?
They are listed for sale.
They are, okay. Well, I, I think it would be really good to.
Going down a road that has nothing to do with the city.
This absolutely has everything to do with selling you a piece of property. When you don't care for the properties you already own, why would we sell you another piece of property to trash like the rest of the ones that you have?
What are trash?
Your property is not code compliant. It's very trashed, has several derelict vehicles and, and.
Hold on a minute.
Property, uh.
I think we're getting way off track here.
I don't think this is our subject. Why would we sell him a piece of property if he's gonna trash?
This gentleman has bringing, has proposed buying the land for an investment that would bring in a tax base.
And now he's here to fight him on it.
Hold on, last, last time we did this.
Here's the problem. I want, I wanna make a comment here. Mr. Barker bought the industrial out where his building is, correct? Am I not right? And, and he, and what is he doing with it?
Has a multi-million dollar company that does things for people around the world.
And what's the, all the land that he bought, what did he do with it?
Well, every year he lets the balloon festival use it.
Maintain? Does he mow it every week?
Do you maintain your property?
Every day.
Okay.
There's cameras, there's lights, it's well-maintained. He employs several people in the city of Rocky Ford.
Okay, well, I'm gonna let you know, if it's not put up for public. Okay, well, I'm going to let you know, if it's not put up for public bid, I will file a lawsuit. I will let it known today. I will file lawsuits since the city of Rocky Ford and city council that the property is not put up for public to bid on.
So why don't you make an offer on it as well? He has done exactly that. He has brought us an offer.
I don't want the whole thing, but if he wants to buy part of it, we'll do it.
Okay, so bring us an offer for the portion you would like to purchase.
This happened last time, that, last time we discussed this with, uh, this gentleman here, we're, we're doing the Hancock thing over there and I, I believe you refused to give them access.
I don't get to give them access, there's no.
You gave, you refused to give them access for their water coming from point A to point B because it goes through your property or something. And the easement was always there.
No.
And.
The easement is not.
I don't, I don't know, it, it, this is the last time we discussed this and every time that somebody tries to improve something in Rocky Ford by putting a business and bringing more money into the community, you come in and.
No, whatever.
And argue with them or, or this, this is the second time.
Why am I on trial here? I just.
You're not on trial, that, I just, I'm just bringing a point, a point of information that this, this is the second time that I've been on council where you've come in and done this to somebody that's trying to improve the property.
Mr. Herrera, I'm going to ask you this, there is no easement through my property. That pipe has not been used in almost twenty years. It's not grant, there's no grandfather clause on that property.
That property's always been there since Hancock.
You have me contacting the court. I have no problem with that.
Let's, let's get back on track here now. All this prior stuff you guys are talking, I wasn't.
I don't know why all my prior, I'm not on trial.
I'm here to talk about what this gentleman proposed to the city. If you got a counter to that, then maybe you can make a counter to that. He, his proposal brings in a tax base with jobs and everything else with, with that plot of land. From what I've seen, he's given us a reasonable offer for that land. Now, if you got some.
I don't want cameras, I don't want cameras, I want it lit up like a complex with cameras.
Did you say you put a street light in your property?
As long as they're behind my house, yeah, I mean.
So a street light and a camera is owned exactly by the property owner. If the property owner wants to put a camera on their property, that is their right to do, just like your light.
I, I'm going to tell you.
Sorry, but that's the way it goes.
I'm going to tell you this, I'm going to tell everybody on the, on the city council, are you, are you following me, Mrs. Malinsky? If you're going to put me on trial here, when I bring up something to you, I will file a lawsuit against every one of you because I am a citizen, I have rights.
So are we.
Whatever happened with my property on Road Eighteen is none of your business, number one, it's a done deal. Number two is Ms. Roberts, everything else, Mr. Gourley, everybody else. If I own a property, yes, I own a property, but I keep my property maintained. My commercial building. My commercial buildings are maintained.
That is absolutely the biggest crock of crap I have heard all night.
Hey, 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 hold, hold, hold. First of all, first of all, look, look, we need to be adults in here, okay? I, oh my God. We, I don't care about this man's priors, I've argued with this man before on things. The bottom line here is this is public property, okay? This is city property, it should go for bid. That's, that, that, that's what we should be discussing here. This should be simple. If his properties are out of compliance with code, then the code enforcement deal with it, that's not our job, that's above my pay grade. And I'm sick and tired of watching us fight like third graders over BS. If this man wants to do something and this man wants to do something, let's, let's make the city a dollar and let's put it out for bid. They put bids in, whoever wins the bid, we're done.
I, I'm happy to discuss that and my concern, I think, is similar to Mayor Gourley's and that is the well-being of the community and how this sale will impact the community. So if he buys it for twenty-five thousand and this gentleman buys it for two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand, if he's bringing in more than two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars for the next decade, it's in that way to sell it to him. And I, and I don't know the exact numbers we're looking at here, but I know we're talking about a significant investment in this city. And I just, if he wants to make a bid that competes with that, but that's going to be a factor, how it impacts the city. Now, if there's a proposal that somebody in the city, anybody wants to make, that's going to be a factor for me. It's not just going to be a dollar sign. So there has to be a proposal here. If somebody wants to come in and says, says, hey, we want to build an automotive factory on this, you know, or some other factory that fits in four acres, well, they're probably going to win that bid, something that's going to bring in three hundred jobs.
I think that's government overreach by saying we get to decide what gets to happen on it.
So here's my question, what does the law say about the city selling a piece of property? Do we have to put it up for bid? Can somebody put in? I asked the mayor a question, not you, please.
So there, there's no, there's no statute or municipal policy on, um, the sale of property like that. It is in the best interest of just being transparent, um, that it is put up for bid, but there, there's nothing that binds us to, um, put it up for a, a bid or opening it up that way.
Would you split apart, would you split off the part behind the park? I don't even know where. I, I have the big wooden fence on, directly north of, running the park of the red house.
He's the bright orange house on Seventh and Sycamore.
If that's what you guys are looking at doing, put that split right there at the parking lot.
I don't want, I don't want the whole thing, but I'll buy it all. I'll sell it back to you, I don't care.
I think, I think subdividing that little area right there would work.
Isn't there already a property line there, you guys?
There's a, it's a weird shape anyway.
My lot is weird shaped. I, I just want to square it up.
So.
Square it out. Go at the, at the parking lot, right? I mean, that would.
Square it off, straighten my fence line back to the parking lot, you get the rest.